Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. I will call this meeting to order, the Richfield City Council Meeting of April 9th. Nobody is here for the open forum, so I ask everyone to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What did I say?
Thank you. The next item is that I will, well, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of the Special Concurrent City Council, HRA, and Planning Commission Work Session of March 26, 2019, the regular city council meeting of March 26, 2019.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes have been approved. The next item is a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April 14 through April 20, and I will invite Chief Henthorn and Tony Martin up to the podium to explain a little bit more about this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'd like to introduce Tony Martin from the city of Edina, Police and Fire from the city of Richfield, contract with the city of Edina for our dispatching services, and we have a great relationship with them. We've partnered with them since 2013. So I'd like to introduce Tony Martin, who's in charge of dispatch, to say a few words.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. As spoken, I'm Tony Martin, PSAT manager, dispatch manager for the Edina 911 Center. With me is also Katie Danielson, who's one of our 911 dispatchers, who she formerly worked here as well in the Richfield. First off, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for allowing this proclamation, and if you don't mind, I'd like to take a couple of minutes just to explain kind of what 911 dispatchers do. 911 dispatchers work in parallel with police officers, firefighters, and paramedics. They're rarely seen, but they're always heard. They're answering all the non-emergency and urgency telephone calls for both cities. It's been said before, and I can't agree more, that dispatchers are really the unsung heroes, partially because it takes a team. It takes everybody to complete that. The profession of a 911 dispatcher is very complex, and it's not easy. It's difficult to find the right candidate and the person that can do that as a career because of the stress, expectations, and training. Dispatchers are translators, but not necessarily the translators you might know. They're more of information translators, partially is because we get 911 callers, and they're almost having, they're probably having their worst day of their lives, sometimes probably in the most, the middle of their scary experience that they've been involved in. Dispatchers are the ones that need to find out what's happening and where that's happening at, and at times trying to calm a hysterical caller or try to get a caller to focus on that they just found their loved one either unresponsive or deceased. I'd like to read a short poem that kind of, it's been around for years in our profession, but it really sums up what we do. "Today I," is what it's called. "Today I made a life and death decision. Educated a citizen, helped keep law enforcement officers safe, prevented a suicide, sent help to a serious car accident, helped find a lost child, assisted in catching a thief, was a friend to a total stranger. I calmed a frantic victim, stayed on the phone to comfort a parent. I stopped a crime. Today, I stayed calm when an officer and citizen asked me for the impossible. Protected your community, gave someone the rest of their life, reunited a family with their lost dog, recovered a stolen vehicle, instructed someone on CPR, and it worked, and they're alive. Told the cop were to go, and they went. Made sure the firefighters got sent to the fire and back to the station safely. Gave someone a hug over the phone, worked with a great team, worked with heroes, saved lives, made a difference. And I would do it all over again. I'm a 911 dispatcher." To put some of that into perspective, just a few statistics. For us in our 911 center, the average wait time for a caller is four seconds. I take pride in that because we have excellent dispatchers that are answering those calls. The national average and expectation is to answer that within 90 seconds, I'm sorry, within 10 seconds 90% of the time. We do that 94% of the time. Most, and two per, I believe it was two seconds 98% of the time, so with non-emergency calls. Last year in 2018, your dispatchers answered over 117,000 telephone calls, including about 40,000 of them from 911. The one skill that every 911 dispatcher has in common is multitasking, and that's because they need to be able to do five things at once, no room for error, and there's always there to answer your call. After my 19 years working in this public safety field, 18 in our 911 center, I am absolutely in awe every time I just sit back and watch them because it's an incredible job. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, Mayor, I wanted, I wanted to say, going back to when we decided to do 911 with, to go with Edina instead of Hennepin County, that was a very, very, you know, stressful situation because folks, you know, it was an unknown, and we want it naturally to stay in our city. But, you know, once that, that you guys took over, it was, it just seamless. It was almost seamless, and we, we've had a lot of people that have just appreciated the service and what you've delivered, and we are very appreciative.
Thank you.
Any other comments before we read the proclamation?
I'd just like to say thank you to the both of you and to all the folks who are on the dispatch team that aren't here. I've heard personally several compliments from Richfield residents and have seen how, how you have really have saved lives in our community. And to hear that poem and to be able to meet you and hear a little bit more about the work you do, I would agree, you know, the dispatchers are the unsung heroes of our community and appreciative to the collaboration that they have with our community members, with our police officers. It takes a whole community to keep our folks safe. So, thank you to the dispatcher who is here, and thank you to you for coming and presenting to us. It is an honor to be able to say thank you and do this proclamation.
Thank you.
So I will come and read it and then pass it on. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas where an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone or text the 911 Police and Fire Communication Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact to our citizens who have, citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link to our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators for the city of Richfield have contributed substantially to the apprehension of the criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each public safety telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance on their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Richfield, do hereby proclaim the week of April 14 through the 20, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Richfield. I'd just like to clap and say thank you to you guys. Thank you so much for your service and dedication to our community.
You know, not that I should interfere. Wait a minute, sir. But why don't you go back there? We should, we should do photo ops when we do proclamations, right? Okay. No, well, yeah, why don't you do that? No, that's okay. That's good there. Why don't you just stand over here and do the proclamation again? Yay, there you go. There, get closer. Good. Thank you so, all of you so much. I don't know why I, what, I should have run for mayor because I know how to do everything, and I've got all the answers.
You just get to be the mentor for all of us.
Kristen, please.
You make my job easier.
Absolutely.
Well, the next item is hats off to hometown hits, and we will start with Councilmember Garcia.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We have a lot of good things that are happening, and, and I won't list all the stuff that I have because, you know, I'd like to share. But first I wanted to mention that last weekend, our mayor, Maria Regan Gonzalez, was at her high school in Janesville, and where is that located?
That is located 45 minutes south of Madison, Wisconsin. I guess there's a Janesville, Minnesota as well, but it's a different one.
Right. And so, and lo and behold, I think Maria doesn't just belong to Richfield, but she belongs to Janesville. And they presented her with the wall, a plaque that will go on the Wall of Honor to celebrate, you know, her hard work and her achievements. And I just, and I, it's like I told the mayor, I said, you know, the thing is, is that sometimes, you know, you, you rent that, you know, you can't go home again, but wouldn't we all love to have a plaque in our high schools? I would. And I just think that that's terrific, that, that people are recognizing, you know, what, what a good mayor we have, and, and she's recognized for nothing but her hard work and for her leadership experience, and we certainly appreciate you and brag about you, and, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
Okay, I'm not done yet. And then I wanted to say to Director Kristen and, and then Jeff, Jeff Peterson, Peterson, Pearson, I know that, I know that, you know, you cleaned out your, you know, your snowplows and, and shined them up and dusted them off and, you know, and just, you know, and you're gonna have to use them again. I hope not. But I think if we all said our prayers, then maybe, maybe we could keep the snow from happening. But just an idea. Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to mention was the fact that our friend Tom Rublin passed away in, recently, and I wanted to mention a little bit about Tom. Tom was, he was a hell of a good guy. He was really just, you'd think he had wheels instead of legs. You'd think he had a brain that was always chug, 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 and he did. And I tell you, I, I can't think of anybody who was so involved in all of the community, in every facet of the community. Talk about a hero for Richfield. Tom was in the Planning Commission, and then, then he became involved in, with the Band Shell. And Tom, and the Band Shell, at its inception, really, we went through a lot of stressful times, and it was really hard for Tom because we had, we had some naysayers that were just terrible. They were rude, unkind, and, and we weren't, we're not used to that in Richfield. So that took, that took a toll on all of us that worked on, on the Band Shell. The one thing too that many, many of you do not know, you know, the swim pool, swimming pool we have now, you know that he worked to make that happen? How many of us remember that? Well, Rick Jabs probably does. But he worked to make that happen. The other thing that he was instrumental in is school referendums. School referendums, and he was, he was part of the, of the school district too. You know, he did committees, he did budget meetings, he did all kinds of stuff. I mean, I, I would say that I wish we could clone somebody like that. He also was part of the, of the board of the Richfield Bloomington Credit Union, and he was just, you know, you knew he represented us, you know, we all voted because we all knew his name. You darn right, we're gonna vote for him. And he did a marvelous job there too. And, and one of the, one of the things he did, and I think I will let Councilmember Supple tell this, and, and when I'm done here, but then, then the other thing that he was, he was chair of the 50th Senate District. That was another, another great issue because everyone that was a member of that knew that he was a chair that, that met his responsibilities, and, and not only that, but was fair and decent to everyone. What else did he work on, you say? Well, he was also instrumental in the Fourth of July Parade, of course, you know. And he was, he was always right in there. And then the pet, one of his pet projects was, of course, the Richfield Pen Fest, and highlighting all, working with all those businesses on Penn Avenue, and working with whatever governmental entity, you know, we had to work with to make a lot of things happen, to bring attention to a very, what almost was going to be blighted area of our, of our town. But he pitched in with, with, you know, with all these, you know, Gordy Hansen, John Veolstad, can't even think, oh, David Gebner, all of those guys, just really built from scratch a little organization and made it into one heck of a, of a good turnout for Richfield, where it's more of a celebrating of what the accomplishments have been done by that committee. So all of these things, Tom was, you know, he, I mean, to talk about him being passionate, you know, he was passionate. He was a guy that, that believed in his community, that loved his community, and it didn't matter who needed help. He was in there to, always willing to help in whatever way he could. He was a unique guy. I, I think a lot of us that, that knew him well, and that included Mary and, and Rick. I think we all, we all knew what it was like to, to listen to him, to debate him, to just, you know, because you, you got, you got really your feelings out there with him because he made you get your feelings out there. And then whether you agreed or disagreed, you had, you know that he was your friend and you were his friend, and he was one heck of a guy. And when we started doing the Band Shell, one of the things that we started working on, and I don't know who brought this up, but would be the, the bricks, or the pavers as they're called now, and, and I said, you know, let's not call them bricks. Let's, for everyone that buys a brick to celebrate, you know, something in their life, their participation in the community, in memoriam, anybody, or something going on in their lives, let's call them community builders. So all of the people that have purchased a brick are community builders who have invested in their community. And I think we can, we can thank the Lord that we had Tom Rublin to be a very, very significant, important part, and a man who loved Richfield, and I would hope that we all continue, you know, in his stead to, to follow. Mary, would you wanna?
A couple of things I just wanted to add. First of all, condolences to Tom's family because he will truly be missed.
Absolutely.
One of the things when he was on the Richfield Bloomington Credit Union Board is they worked together with other community organizations, and out at Fort Snelling, they worked, I think over 100,000 flags were placed out there, and he was instrumental in part of that, and he got the whole board and everybody working together to make sure that we are honored, our veterans and the people that had served in the military. And he was always looking for ways to honor other people. But the thing I think I remember most is the last time I saw him, about a month ago, he was talking about how we needed to watch out for the next generation and make the world a better place for the grandchildren and the little ones out there and the next generation. And so I think that's his legacy, that he's trying to make the world a better place for everyone else, and he kind of commissioned us to all to go out and do the same. So I think that was how he'd want to be remembered, that he made the world a better place, and he wants us to carry on that legacy.
You know, before I forget too, one of the things that, that happened to him is, you know, his family was always number one, of course, but, and he loved them all, but, you know, his kids and his, and his wife Susan, but when he first got his little, first, his little granddaughter, I mean, he was a different guy. He was just, talk about falling in love. I mean, he just adored the baby, and he would babysit, and he just loved it. And, I mean, thank goodness that the Lord blessed him with a grandchild so that he got to know and, and love and the grandbaby. And she, she's really lost a, a great grandpa. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Garcia, do you have the information you can share with residents about his funeral and service? I know so many people looked up to him and worked with him, and if, do you have that information to share if they would like to attend?
I think that will be in April the 13th, from 5 to 6 p.m. is visitation, and 6 p.m. is the little service, and it'll be at the, at the Minnesota Cremation Society on the 7100 block on France Avenue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I will pass it over to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor Regan Gonzalez. And in somber, somber hats off today. There are two, two obituaries. One, I just wanted, want to join my colleagues in just saying that we just, our thoughts and our prayers go out to Tom Rublin and his family. And, excuse me, his, his absence is felt, is felt already, and even as we, we plan for the, the Pen Fest and everything, you just, you, he, he has two legacies. One, we have work to do, but two, there is, there is just an incredible, they're credible institutions all, all across our, our community that just bear his handiwork, that, that are growing and thriving. So, so thank you, Tom, and thank you to Tom's family for just making investment in our community. And I think it may have been the same meeting that I was at with Councilmember Supple, where he, he just shared, it's a, it's a, it was a, it was a partisan event, but a part, nonpartisan soul. And, and his vision for, for politics was country first. It was, it was, it was love of our community that started in Richfield and extended out, and, and that's a, that's an incredible legacy. So, so our hats off to Tom Rublin. And then another, another resident who's, who's recently passed, Rosa Margarita Cordova is my grandmother, who was, was born in, in Manati, Puerto Rico, but, but she, she lived in, in Richfield. She was a dedicated woman. She, she served so, so faithfully everyone she knew. And through incredible struggle, through a husband who was a, who was a combat wounded veteran of the Korean War, she was a faithful military wife, and when he had Alzheimer's, she, she served him over a decade faithfully until the end, and with a, a constant joy that is remarkable through, through incredible personal pain and surgeries. I don't think I ever met that woman when asking her, even at the end, "How are you doing, Grandma? How are you doing, Abuela?" And she would say, "I'm doing good, thanks to the Lord." And it was so pure, and it was so heartfelt, and it only comes from the most generous, you can't, you can't fake that. And so there will be a memorial service at Straight Gate Church on April, April 20, and at, at 10 a.m. And so I'd invite community residents to join us. But I just want to say a hats off to, to my abuela, and, and just as we remember her, just remember somebody who in all circumstances maintained joyful and left a legacy of, of love with, with all her family.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I have a couple of items here. One is a big thank you to the Richfield Rotary. I was recently at the Richfield Arts Commission, and they told us that the Rotary is doing a community event where they're helping people build those little free libraries, and one of the groups that they're giving a library to is the Richfield Arts Commission, and it's gonna be over next to the Band Shell. And so we just want to say thank you so much to the Richfield Rotarians for their help with that. If you go on their Facebook page on May 11, from 8:30 to 11:30, they're gonna be assembling and building those free libraries, so you can contact them if you want to find out more about that event, or if you want to get involved in helping with it. So we just want to say thank you to them. I also would like to say thank you to all the different groups and organizations that help every spring to clean up our parks in Richfield. And I know one of the ones they talked, that we heard about, is that the staff and the council and the commissions are gonna help clean up Veterans Park on Tuesday, April 23rd, from 11 to 2 p.m. But I know that there are dozens of other community groups that are out there cleaning up other parks around the city, and so a big hats off to all those people that are helping spruce up our parks and clean up. We really, really appreciate that. And the last thing I have is Mayor Regan Gonzalez and I were able to go on the D Line Tour through the Met Council. They were showing us what the vision was for what's gonna happen for Bus Rapid Transit, and it's a line that starts out in Bloomington, goes through Richfield, up through Minneapolis, and then up through Brooklyn Center, I believe. And the idea for this is the Bus Rapid Transit is set up so that you get your tickets ahead of time, so you can load and unload more quickly, and they've got it set up. They were showing us different ways. There's new ways to like secure wheelchairs so people can do it more independently, and they don't have to wait for the driver. And so there's a whole bunch of new things that they're helping with that. So in doing all of this, they are trying to make it a 20% faster trip. And so that's gonna make a huge, huge difference because that's one of the most heavily li, traveled transit corridors that we have. So it was really amazing listening to all this and finding out about it. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few events to highlight. If you weren't able to attend the photo reception this past weekend at the community center for, co-sponsored by the Arts Commission and Friendship City Commission, Cynthia Mandel, Richfield resident and ambassador to Heredia, Costa Rica, has a bunch of her photos on display of wildlife from Costa Rica, and that, it's still, the reception happened, but it's still on display through the end of May, so I'd encourage- through the end of May, so I'd encourage you to go check that out. Um, this weekend, the Saturday morning, is the Community Wellness Expo at the Richfield High School. So I'd encourage you to come, check that out. There's all sorts of events and different groups, uh, hosting tables with free resources, and there'll be presentations and such. Um, and then the last event, I, I just want to mention, uh, to lift up the good work of the, the Friends of Wood Lake, um, and supporting of our, our nature center, uh, two weeks from Friday is their, uh, annual fundraising dinner. And so if you have not yet had a chance to buy a ticket, I would encourage you to do that and come join us.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Um, I would just like to also share my condolences to the Rublin family and to the Troutman family as well. Um, thank you for sharing that, Councilmember Troutman. The role of our abuelitos y abuelitas is so important in our leadership and it, and how we perceive the world, um, as well. You know, Tom was an abuelito to, to his grandkids, but he, you know, in many ways was a mentor and role model to so many people in Richfield. Um, and I would just echo, you know, my interactions with, with Tom. Um, we always had very thoughtful conversations, um, that went, that went deep, and we could really discuss, discuss issues. Um, and, you know, that's something I think that is missing a lot today. And he, he did a great job of having, um, very passionate, you know, intentional kind of conversation, um, and not just rubber stamping things and saying, "Okay, let's agree to disagree," or, or talk about something at the surface level. But he, you were really able to get deep with him, and, and he really truly loved his community. Um, so thank you. Thank you to the council members for, for sharing all of their, their thoughts about Tom and, and to Councilmember Troutman, um, and our, my condolences go out to their families. Yesterday, um, I was, or was it today that we talked with police, or was it yesterday? Um, today. Today, this morning, I had, um, the opportunity to just present myself to some of our police officers doing some in-service training and just thank them for their dedication and work and commitment to, to the community of Richfield and keeping it safe. So I just felt very honored and excited to be able to just have even a little FaceTime with, with our officers and thank them for their work. Um, another item that I wanted to bring up is on July twenty-seventh, we have our annual Urban Wildland, uh, five K. And I think there's a couple different options. I only know about the five K because I can't think of anything longer, running anything longer than that, but I know that it's not just a five K. Um, so please sign up, bring your friends and family. It's an absolutely beautiful trail and path. It's a great way to meet other residents, um, and connect and support a great cause here in Richfield. So you can visit urbanwildland.com to sign up, and the race is on July twenty-seventh. Um, next item is, I, I can't believe that I'm going to say this, but we will have snow for our rescheduled state of the community. So we had it initially scheduled for the same time, I think it was around the polar vortex, so we canceled and rescheduled, and we said, "There's absolutely not going to be any snow in May. Let's do it in May." It could have been today, it could have been yesterday, it could have been any other day in May, but it is May eleventh, which is on Thursday, or April, excuse me. Thank you, Councilmember, um, Supple. I wish it was May, but it's April. Uh, so April eleventh, this Thursday, rain or shine, snow or not, we will be having the state of the community at five-thirty to seven at the middle school. And again, it's, uh, just an opportunity to share what is going on this year at the city and our visions for the future of our community. And we'll be having a call to action for residents to say, "Get involved and, and find your passion and invest in making your community a better place right here in Richfield." And we'll be inviting the schools, the businesses will be talking, um, as well as the Richfield Foundation and local organizations to share, to share their visions for the future. So hopefully that big snowstorm, I think I heard, um, you know, it's kind of a historical, has some historical significance, but hopefully it's only a couple raindrops and everything will be fine. Uh, so that's this Thursday. We also, I just want to remember and remind folks that we have the Fourth of July celebration coming up, the Red, White, and Blue Days. Um, I can't wait till July. Hopefully there will be no snow in July. But, you know, just go to redwhitenbluedays.com. It's so important. This is the biggest event in our community of the year. The entire city comes out, folks from all different backgrounds and ages. It's multiple days. It's something that Richfield is so proud of, and it's a hundred percent volunteer run. So we are always looking for additional support, additional community members to help volunteer during those days. Before we know it, Fourth of July, it will be right around the corner, and our committee is always looking for, for more support. And I think that's all I have for hats off.
Madam Mayor, one thing I'll say, you know, regarding the snow, I think we should have prayed about it, not taking any chances.
I think, you know, Councilmember, I don't know, but I thought last time we voted that no more snow, but it still went through, so I don't know.
I know, I know. And I, and I know that, you know, and, and the Jared actually put it in the minutes and that, you know, but, you know.
I don't know.
I don't know, maybe, maybe not all our voices were loud enough. I don't know.
Yeah. We'll see. So, um, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. The agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar, and that will go to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the longer length of the urban, uh, race, urban well and brace is a half marathon. But I'm absolutely with you that I'm down for the five K.
Yeah.
Um, so the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions also have been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. And there's two items to consider, um, and, uh, Councilmember Supple teed this up beautifully with her comments on the Metro Transit D-line. Consider adoption of a resolution to support the Metro Transit D-line Bus Rapid Transit project and the stop within Richfield along Portland Avenues sixty-sixth, Seventieth, Seventy-third, and Seventy-seventh Streets. Item B, consider adoption of a resolution authorizing recreation services staff to accept a twenty-five-thousand outdoor recreation grant from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for improvements to a dock and boardwalk at Wood Lake Nature Center and execute agreements necessary to complete the project. I, I submit these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Any comments from City Council on the consent calendar? All right, all in favor? Aye. The consent ba, calendar has been approved. The next item will go to Councilmember Supple.
Okay, this item is consideration of acceptance of, of bid tabulation and to approve an award of a contract for the citywide meter replacement project to Core and Main LP for Schedule A work for two million eight-hundred-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-forty-one dollars and Vanguard Utility Service Incorporated for Schedule B and Schedule D work for one million seventy-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and forty-five cents, and to authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars without further city council consideration. So the city has ten thousand five-hundred-thirty-four residential and two-hundred-thirty-six commercial water meters, and these water meters serve a critical role in the city's water utility infrastructure since they serve as the cash registers for the utility division. The city's current water meters were installed between two thousand seven and two thousand nine and have reached the end of their expected lifespan. The batteries of these water meters are prone to failure, and significant staff time and resources are being dedicated to replace the failed meters on a case-by-case basis. City, city staff recommended a citywide water replacement project because this would be more cost-efficient than doing a piecemeal replacement, and it ensures that the meter and the reading technology will be uniform throughout the city. So that'll give us more stability in our water utility department and in our customers' utility service. So the council directed the staff to solicit bids for this three-year program. Um, when we put the bid out, one of the things that we asked is that as part of the project bid specifications, the contractor will be required to have all staff, project staff, undergo BCA background checks and to wear the required ID patches that include the Richfield logo. The contractor is also required to have staff available to conduct all the scheduling related to the replacement, and a licensed plumber on staff available, and supervisors in place to respond to those customer concerns and complaints. So at no point will the contractor's staff be allowed to enter home if a competent adult over the age of eighteen is not present at the property. So they put a lot of safety considerations into those bid specifications. The city held a bid opening for the project on March twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, and four bids were received. The bid documents included pricing provisions for furnishing and installation of the water meters. So based on a review of those four bids, the city staff recommends awarding the two contracts that we mentioned earlier. And I also wanted to mention that this project was identified in the capital improvement budget and capital improvement plan for two thousand nineteen through, through two thousand twenty-three, and the funding for the project has been accounted for in the current year's water utility budget in the coming years, and, and, excuse me, in the coming year's budgets coming up. So is there anything else that staff wanted to add?
Um, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Supple, I'll just add that with the approval of this, if this moves forward tonight, then, um, we're looking to start reaching out to people in May, and we are going to start with a pilot program so we can work through the communication process to make sure that it's, it's up to what the city is expecting, and then we'll go bigger scale after that.
Director Asher, I had a question. Um, could you share a little bit more about the benefits or the changes that residents will see with these new, um, meters? I think there was a couple things you shared that what folks might be interested in.
Sure, um, and if I miss it, you have to let me know. Um, so, I mean, just the meters that we have, they're, they're, they've been there for ten years. You'd think they'd last longer. These ones are, have a fifteen-year warranty. Um, but we've had problems with these meters since day one and just a high failure rate. So, and they're like, um, Councilmember Supple read that it's, there are cash registers, so when we have a failure, we are not accurately charging people. Um, and so that's, we're kind of wanting to do that. Um, we don't want to overcharge or undercharge, so as a city, we side on the undercharge. And so then we're losing revenues at the same time. So, um, it, we also spend a lot of staff time, uh, chasing these, these failures as well. But these meters that we chose have a high accuracy. Um, they'll help us with leak detection early on. We're also going to be looking at reading the meters on a more frequent basis because we don't have to drive every single street. We can just do a loop of the city. So then we can get more readings, and then we're going to also have a, um, a platform where people can look and see what their water use has been, and we can outreach with leak detection on our own, even if they're not watching their water use. So it should save us time and money, it should save, um, our users' time and money, and our customers, I guess.
Thank you.
Is that everything? Is there something I didn't mention?
No, that was, that was it.
Cool, thank you.
You want me to go ahead and make the motion?
Oh.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say two quick things. One, I just, uh, can't, uh, can't say enough, uh, good things about our public work staff. So I, I really appreciate, um, what you guys do on so many levels and so many different departments, and particularly you, Director Asher. Every time we talk, every time we connect, you're talking about a new leadership book that you've read, and being a servant leader and everything. And so that level of leadership and dedication, it just infects your whole department. And you guys just reflect our city so well. And, um, I was literally just walking down church last week, and what are people talking about? "Oh, Councilmember Troutman, let me tell you about the roads. Let me tell you about how happy we are." And you does, you, you do so much for us. So I just want to say thank you for that. Um, and then I also just wanted to say, I'm really looking forward to this technology upgrade, to our cash registers, as you, as you put it, but, um, really for folks that, um, as our homes become more smart and we become more ecologically sensitive, uh, this is going to give people an opportunity on a day-to-day basis, I understand, even to, to see how their water use is affected, if they fix that hose, if they stop that leak. Um, so that kind of data for people that are interested, and probably in the coming years, people are going to be more interested. This is something that I'm really looking forward to, not just for, for the city, but for our community. I think it's going to be great, so thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add, now that, um, you reminded me, so this technology that will let people see how their water use is also going to allow us to communicate with them. And like, they can get a text, a voice call, or an email, depending on their preference. And if there's a water main break on their, um, street and they have no water, we can do, send a text, a, a voice call, or, or, um, an email and just say, "Hey." We can buy a map, circle the affected properties, and get immediate out, let them know it's estimated to be back in service by seven P M. Let them know when it is back in service, if it's early. Um, so we're really excited about being able to interface in that way, too, because we can do it with snow emergency routes, or not routes, but snow emergencies and everything.
No, thank, thank you for that. I, I had forgotten about that, too. I just, and I was just going to follow up. We, it won't just be for, for the water main, but that's a technology that we're going to be able to use community-wide, which will be great, that people can opt out of, right? It's not, it's not like you're, you're going to be forced to receive texts if you can't. I think almost all those, you, you say, "Stop," and you'll never hear from us if you don't want to hear from us.
Right, yeah.
But there is that tool that we'll have that we don't have right now. So you're, you're, you're not just helping your department, but really all of our, public safety, all of us, so thank you.
Well, then I will move to accept the bid tabulation and approve awards of contracts for the citywide water meter replacement project to Core and Main LP for Schedule A work for two million eight-hundred-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-forty-one dollars, and the Vanguard Utility Services Incorporated for Schedule B and Schedule D work for one million seventy-thousand-six-hundred-seventy-seven dollars and forty-five cents, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars without further city council consideration.
Second.
Any additional council comments?
I have one comment question, if, if I may, Mayor. Just as we're thinking, and I'm looking at the rest of our agenda, too, and aware of that, and lots of big projects are happening. Would we be able to use this, uh, text push technology for, um, communication on things like, um, community meetings and construction updates? So we just always struggle, and we can always get better to, than, and as, as many flyers as we send out, people say, "I never, I had no idea this meeting was happening." We could potentially use that for this also, and kind of take that next step.
Absolutely.
Great.
Yes.
That's a big win.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, all in favor? Aye. The motion has been approved. I don't think we've had this before with a vote.
Yay, 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 communication to citizens.
Great, thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Uh, thank you, Mary. So, uh, we will be considering the approval of the final design plans and specifications for the Lyndale Avenue Reconstruction Project from Sixty-S sixth Street to Seventy-S sixth Street, and the bid tabulation and award of contract to R.L. Larson Excavating Incorporated in the amount of ten million six-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, and authorization of the city manager to approve contract changes under a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars without further city council consideration. Um, and I believe I will actually just hand it over to City Engineer Pearson to tell us more about this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and, uh, start off with an apology given the conversation tonight. This is the second year in a row I've tried to get on top of things and summarize my snow blower by April first. And now for the second year in a row, we'll have a historic April blizzard, so I promise not to do that next year.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, it's my fault. Uh, so I'll just give a quick, um, overview. Uh, I know we have a couple new members, uh, on the council since the layout was approved last summer. Um, the, the intent of this presentation tonight is to kind of just, um, A, go through the, the design, uh, for the new members and those who haven't seen it, uh, watching tonight, and also, um, to highlight some of the changes we made in the design based on conversations with property owners and businesses. And so, um, I'll start off with, uh, just a couple overview things. These are, these are new elements that are going to be included with the Lyndale Avenue design that we haven't seen before, uh, on that we haven't seen before on projects in Richfield. So the first one is, is called a compact roundabout. And we have three of these included with the design of Lindale and I'll, I'll show you, I'll show you where those are. But these are, are roundabouts, but they don't take up as much of a footprint as a standard roundabout that we have on, on other intersections in town today. And the way you can do that, it's fully surmountable, that middle median, or island is in the middle, is, is concrete. It's raised, but it's fully surmountable. So buses, large trucks, large vehicles that wouldn't normally make the turn on the outside radius can just, the wheels can go completely over that center. There's no signs or anything, and so they can make that movement. And in order to incorporate that, you know, that circle that, you know, typically you'd have signs out there telling everybody one way and, and chevrons and everything, we're going to be doing some things on pavement reflectors and, and chevrons that are built into the curb of that, of that median that will give that direction, but still allow it to be fully mountable. The other element that you'll see in this project that we haven't seen in other areas of town, of course, we have seen the rectangle, the rapid flashing beacons. Those are those signs that you push the button if you're crossing the street and it, it flashes almost like the intensity of a police car light. But what we're adding to that and, and the crossing, one of the crossings that I'll highlight is in-pavement lighting. So there's some communities in the Twin Cities that have this. I know for sure, like in front of the hospital down in Burnsville, they have in-pavement lighting. I think there's a couple other locations not too far from here. But this is something that our operations department wanted to try to kind of, not only is it, does it aid in safer crossings for pedestrians, but it's kind of something that they want to kind of use as, as a trial basis to see how the maintenance is involved. How does it, how durable? And so this is kind of our test for future, future use on other projects. So with that said, I'll move into the layout. And we're going to start from the south and move to the north. And so each one of these, these are stacked basically a block each. So the first block on the, on the top of the drawing here is 76th Street to 75th Street. So the extents of this project go from 76th Street up to effectively 66th Street. So just basically where they, where they ended construction as part of the 66th Street project. It was approximately about 10 blocks long, full reconstruction. It includes underground utilities and storm sewer services up to the property lines, the utility services up to the property line. So it's a full reconstruction. Starting in that first block, you'll notice that included with this project is a lane conversion. So we're going from four lanes to three lanes. We're adding that center turn lane with this design. As we move forward, you'll see we're also adding in, in certain locations, the medians at the intersections, which not only protects that left turn lane, but gives pedestrians a spot to stop in the middle of the street. Now, they're only crossing one lane in each direction compared to today where they're crossing two lanes in each direction. But we've gotten a lot, probably some of our biggest feedback on projects like 66th Street and Portland Avenue has been the addition of those medians and how much that drastically changes people's feelings as they cross the street and the safety of that. So we're including that in this project. At the end of this first block at 75th Street, you'll see the red box. And what I'm trying to highlight there, that, that is the crossing that will have the, not only the rapid flash beacons, but also the in-ground, in-pavement lighting. So that's, it gets quite a bit of, of crossing, pedestrian crossings there. There's a number of large apartment buildings on the east side of Lindale Avenue there. And there's, there's Super America and some other shops on the west side of Lindale there that are frequented by residents looking for convenience store items or grocery items at one of the businesses. So we see a lot of crossings on there. Unfortunately, I can't, don't remember exactly. It's within the, since I've been here, so it's within the last 10 years, we have had a fatality at that crossing, just, just adjacent to that crossing. And again, it was that kind of dark time of night, crossing four lanes and, and, and the person was unfortunately struck and killed there. So this was a highlight. This was a, a big spot that we wanted to address in our design. Another part of that element of, of addressing this design is the two circles you see. And the circles are highlighting current driveway entrances to those apartment buildings. And we worked with that apartment building to consolidate it into one main entrance coming into their building that will line up with 75th Street. So it'll become more like a full intersection as opposed to two entrances and crossings and a, a street coming from the other direction. It's, there was just a lot going on there. So the consolidation of those driveways, as well as the improved crossings, should really make a big difference at that intersection. And we're, we're excited to see how that works out. As we move further north, again, it's that same design. So I'll just point out that on the west side, so on the top of, as you're looking at your, your plans there, the, the top of the street is a trail. And then there's on-street bike lanes, a lane in each direction, a center turn lane. And then on the south, or on the east side, on the bottom of the roadway is the sidewalk. So it's very similar to like a Portland Avenue design where we have a trail on one side, a sidewalk on the other, and on-street bike lanes. And, you know, we get questions about that. And ultimately, as what we've learned through, now this will be our third project of this design where you're including both a trail, multi-use trail and on-street bike lanes, is that, you know, there's such a variety of riders. If I'm going to take my kids out, you know, on their bikes, they're much more comfortable. I'm much more comfortable on a trail setting, multi-use trail setting than I would be on bike lanes on the street. However, we have a large number of commuters that come through Richfield. They both live in Richfield and come through, pass through Richfield on bicycle. And, and they're, you know, they're riding at speeds that really should be out on the street, on, on bike lanes. So that's why we've added both of those types of facilities. The, the circles here are just highlighting some changes that we, that we did to the layout into final design to address concerns that we had from property owners. And all of those circles are highlighting the saving of oak trees. We have a large number of oak trees along this corridor. That's the, one of the biggest things we heard in this process is, you know, you can't take out all these old oak trees. So we worked with the, the homeowners. For the most part, we have had adequate right-of-way that we could, you know, shift the trail. And, and you'll see as, in these circles that the trail actually is, it doesn't line up with the curb. It may shift in or out. In one instance, kind of that upper right circle, that property owner really wanted to save the trees in front of their, you know, home. They were city trees or in the boulevard. But they provided a, a large amount of shade to their, to their home. And so we worked with them and actually got a one-foot easement of their property to shift the trail far enough away from those trees that they could be maintained in the boulevard as part of the design. The, the larger circle on the bottom kind of highlights, there's a parking bay there. And so that was included with the preliminary layout and really with the intent of that on-street parking. Those homes have alley access to their homes. They don't have a front driveway. And Lindale, of course, is, is a arterial that doesn't have on-street parking. So when they have guests over, they have very little availability to have parking adjacent to their home. So we, we included, because of the right-of-way width in this area, we were able to include portions of on-street parking. And in this case, what differs from the initial layout is that we just kind of shrunk that, that parking to save the trees in front of the property owner. So, you know, they were willing to kind of put parking further away from their house as long as we save trees. As we move further north, as we get towards Oak Grove Boulevard, same type of thing. These circles pretty much just highlight the shifting of the trail to save trees. The one on the, the intersection of Oak Grove Boulevard there, we initially, one of the things we wanted to address with Oak Grove Boulevard, it comes in at a, at a pretty extreme angle right now into Lindale. And it, it can create some sightline issues for vehicles pulling out of that street. So we wanted to kind of square that street up a bit. And our initial design squared it up, you know, adequately. And, and it was all with, still within city right-of-way. But there was concern from the neighbors about how much of that green space, even though city right-of-way is still green space and, and yard, that they, that they, you know, liked having. How much of that was being taken out now that we straightened out the road? So what we did was kind of, went havesies, basically compromised back. So it's, it's still an improvement from what's out there today, but it maintains more of that green space for the adjacent property owner. We also worked with the property owners along that area, that the two just south of Oak Grove to, we're going to reconstruct a consistent fence along their property. They have a fence out there now. They were, you know, they felt it was very important to maintain that. And so we're going to build a consistent fence along that, those properties, and they were, they were happy about that. As you can see, the, we come to the first roundabout at 70th Street. That roundabout is currently a signalized intersection. So there's, as I mentioned, there's three roundabouts, compact roundabouts included with this project. The two compact roundabouts that are replacing signalized intersections will have RFBs on all legs. So this intersection will have those push-button RFBs for crossing. And this one in particular was also a concern to make a, make sure we address those safe crossings because of the adjacent high, the proximity to the high school. That's another reason that we also included these island crossings in this area. Both the middle school and high school walk and bike areas straddle Lindale Avenue. So students that go to the middle school and high school could potentially have to cross Lindale Avenue to go to their school, walking or biking. So it was very important to us. We have a, the city has a safe cross to school plan. And, you know, that, that plan emphasizes safe crossings of these arterial roadways. So that was another reason that we looked at those islands. The, I'll just touch on this, the circle on the upper block is highlighting the retaining wall along the history center. So that retaining wall is actually designated historic. So we needed to somehow preserve it. We're a little tight on right-of-way between the Wood Lake Nature Center and that retaining wall. So we pushed the sidewalk tighter to the street. Again, our goal typically is to always get that boulevard space in there, but it's not always possible. Sometimes you have to make compromise. And in this case, we just pushed the sidewalk up closer to the street to, to leave that wall in place. On the nor, on the other side of the street, we did the same thing with the trail. Because the Wood Lake Nature Center, there's a pretty extreme bank that goes into the nature center. If we went even just a few feet into the nature center, it would have been exaggerated into the nature center because we would have had to make up that slope. So we did everything we could to stay out of that, that area. Again, there's a roundabout at 68th Street and then a crossing at Lakeshore Drive. That Lakeshore Drive intersection will be right-in, right-out. We have a significant crash problem there, so that right-in, right-out design will help that. And then you'll, the drivers will utilize the roundabouts to still make full, full directional access. That crossing at Lakeshore Drive will have a push-button RFB as well. And then the final block, 67th Street Roundabout is signalized today. You can see how wide the existing roadway is there. We gain a lot of kind of open green space in this area. So that roundabout will have push-button RFBs. It does create some extra green or plaza space adjacent to City Bella. On the east side, it created enough space, this, this roadway design, so that we could get a whole bay of parking along that Wood Lake Center building. And the property owners were very thrilled about that. They, they've been asking for, is there anything we can do to get on-street parking in that area for years? So that's a really big benefit to them. And then on the City Bella side, the arrow just signifies that we worked with them to extend our construction limits all the way up to the building face so that that whole plaza and sidewalk is new. They're going to incorporate some planters that we will build, but they will maintain. So there was, you know, back and forth with them to kind of try to do some beautification and streetscape elements. So that, that's all I had. Oh, I'll, sorry, I've got the schedule. So anticipated schedule, we have the contractor pre-construction meeting on April 23rd. April 25th, we'll be doing our project kickoff open house and the cards are made up for that. They should be sent out in the mail, probably tomorrow or, or the next day. That will be on April 25th from 4:00 to 7:00, right here at the municipal center, back in the Bartholomew Room. And then the contractor anticipates starting on May 1st. And as of right now, looking at staging, they, they think they'll start on the south end. But now that's it. I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted one clarification. So when you were showing the parking north of 67th Street, is that on both sides or just on the east side?
It's on both sides. The, there is currently parking on the west side. And what we'll be doing is adding it to the east side as well. So that, again, that, that, the direction we've gotten from council over years is this, this Lindale 66 area is kind of the downtown. And, and to try to emphasize that and help, help with the development of that, we were adding the on-street parking.
All right, thank you. And then I just had one quick comment. I was very impressed with all of the changes that were made in response to feedback from residents. I think that's really important because I remember sitting here a few months ago and hearing everybody's concerns. And it was nice to see that everybody listened and that we were able to come up with something that worked for all the parties. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members?
Well, I'm just, you know, after, after neighborhood meeting, you know, I, I thought, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I, and I, you know, commend the staff for following through. And I think really making the, the giant effort to see, you know, their point of view and, and examining a little bit more with more of a, of a fine tuning and, you know, and a, and a more compatible thing to, you know, to, you know, to, to make the, I think the, the neighbors and the residents feel a lot better. And not, not always, we always fear change in the unknown. And I think that, you know, your work shows really well. And, and I know you're saying this, this is going to be a gateway. It's a beautiful, it'll connect well with our, with the bridge going to Bloomington too. Which is, it, it's just, it's just going to, just really, really open that area up. And it's going to look beautiful, just, just the way I think 66th Street is going to, is looking on the west side. So thank you for your efforts.
Other comments? Yes, Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you to, to staff and for our transportation commissioners and all our citizens that, that they gave their feedback. And, and thinking again about the, the opportunity when we have meetings, this was one of those instances where we still had citizens that said we didn't know about meetings, you know, months in advance. And usually, you know, that's a good sign that people just aren't paying attention to the city because they're living their own lives. But a little interruption just to let folks know, I think, I think is a great technology upgrade. But I want to, there are just a couple of things that I want to, I want to highlight and thank you guys. The trees, saving so many of the trees, incredible. Thank you. I know that's extra work. It's just work that's so worth it. And so I want to say thank you. I know there was one, I don't want to mention the citizens' names, but they had planted an apple tree when they first got married. And it was technically within the right-of-way. And so I just want to thank our staff for giving that consideration and making sure it's such a beautiful testimony to a loving relationship over generations and are able to preserve that. And so I think that's tremendous. Also, just for the general benefit of the population, a lot of questions that we get, there's some component of the road that people like. And they're like, why don't we just keep X or Y? Nothing needs to change. And just to remind our citizens who, thankfully, we only do this twice a century, right? Where we, we have to redo a road, all the road comes out. So the sidewalks, the right-of-way, everything, they're like, well, I like that stop sign or I like that street light. There's no street light. When we do, we do this twice a, every 50, the, the street lights are, so it's not, are we going to keep something that's, here we have an open road, what should go there? And we look at everything from bike lanes to sidewalks. It's not that we're going to keep a sidewalk or not. It's that we have so much space here. We won't do this again until we're all, you know, incredibly old, hopefully, or, or not. Or maybe our kids will, will look at that. And then they'll have to look at that again from kind of a blank canvas. And so just so- And so just so so citizens understand that that part of the process. It's not that we're keeping or replacing anything and that we have a wide open corridor. And so many folks have spent so much time and and really good effort and really creative thinking, but especially our staff. And just one, one last pitch for anybody who who says, well, why on earth would we do roundabouts? Oh, dear God, why another roundabout? I will, I'll just, I'll just say this. I know we, this is not to to necessarily change anybody's minds. But there are a number of benefits to to roundabouts. One, less people die. That's it's a great tremendous benefit. There are, there are less injuries with roundabouts. They are slightly less expensive on the building. But also, and this is for for any libertarian folks out there that are interested in that. This is not a, we have no traffic engineers. There's nobody in the government that's trying to say, well, this is a good time or this is a bad time. This is the 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 traffic light should be twenty seconds or fifteen seconds. This is two people having a human interaction saying, oh, looks like there's a person there. I'm going to stop. Looks like there's a car there. I'm going to stop. And so we, as a community, sort that out themselves. And I think that's that's commendable. The other thing with our with our cell phones, if you come to a stoplight, how many people have had this happen? Stoplight, I'm going to look at my phone. I'm going to answer my phone. That happens at a stoplight. If you come up to a roundabout and you're on your phone, you have somebody that's going to go through an intersection on their phone, but they have to turn. What happens to that phone? The phone goes down and people turn. So we're really glad to have roundabout. We're all in on those. So I just want to say for all those reasons, we're just really grateful for for all the work you put in. It's a, it's a big lift, but it it's time to be done. And thank you for for you. And I know you represent a lot of people who put a lot of hours into this plan. So thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I'll just on that point, just bring up to the council, if you haven't been following the news, that it appears pending final vote and and governor approval that as of August first, it will be illegal to have that phone in your hand while you're driving a car. So at least from our engineering perspective, we like that. That's a big cause of concern as we try to design safe roadways. So just a reminder to everybody.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? And I just, I won't repeat anything that anyone else said, but I'm really looking forward to this reconstruction. There's so many things that are unsafe right now as it is with Lindell and improvements that we will be making for our future and the future of our families. So thank you to the staff and the community members. And we will have continued conversations and working with residents because there will be the construction and a lot of communication that we'll have to make sure we have with our residents and our businesses on Lindell and all of the folks traveling on Lindell and our schools as well. So we will continue ensuring that we have good communication with everybody on the project moving forward.
Yeah, I'll just echo every, everything there and not to hold it up, but just really impressed with the the residents and staff who work together to make sure that this this project meets the needs even up to the individual lots. That not just going block by block as needed, but that every little detail is figured out. And so with that, I will first make a motion to approve the final design plans and specifications for the Lindell Avenue Reconstruction Project from Sixty-Sixth Street to Seventy-Sixth Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved?
And then second, I will make a motion to approve the bid tabulation and award of contract to R L Larson Excavating Incorporated, the amount of ten million, six hundred seventy-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-seven cents, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars without further city council consideration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you. The next item is a consideration of adoption of a resolution providing for the sale of eight million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars in general obligation bonds, series twenty nineteen A. Let's see here, I think I'll just pass it to our finance director, Regis, to walk us through this.
Well, the the purpose of the bonds is to fund the first stage of the Lindell Avenue Reconstruction Project and the final funding for the Sixty-Sixth Street Project. It's approximately seven point five million for Lindell and two point two million for the Sixty-Sixth Street Reconstruction Project. Total par amount of the bonds is going to be approximately, I mean, at, well, it's going to be eight million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand. And that is net of a one million dollar city, city cash contribution from city L G A funds. And then hopefully that by doing that and also having contributions from the city's utility funds of approximately a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars a year, that'll bring the annual tax levy down to about four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars a year. If we didn't do those two things, the tax levy would be upwards of seven hundred thousand dollars a year. So hopefully by doing that, it makes it a little more palatable to issue this debt.
Thank you very much. I I will read through the executive summary here. Do we, are we going to have a presentation as well in addition or no? For this one? No? Oh, okay. So included within the city's five-year street reconstruction plan adopted by the city council on July tenth, twenty eighteen, are two projects, the reconstruction of Sixty-Sixth Street and the reconstruction of Lindell Avenue. The Sixty-Sixth Street Project is a county road project and twenty nineteen will be year three of construction. The project is estimated at sixty-one million, two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. The city's cost share includes twenty-five percent of road construction, sixty-six percent of storm sewer, a hundred percent of water sewer utility replacement, and any additional streetscape elements not cost shared by the county. The project has included reconstruction of failing pavement, the replacement of silly city utilities, undergrounding of parallel overhead utility lines, and improved, excuse me, and improved bicycle and pedestrian accommodations. The project also addresses safety and traffic flow concerns through the use of additional medians and roundabouts. Funding for the Sixty-Sixth Street Project is provided by the combination of issuance of general obligation bonds, municipal state aid, federal grants, county and local funding, and utility rate payers. The Lindell Avenue Project will reconstruct the roadway between Sixty-Seven Street and Seventy-Sixth Street and include the replacement of city utilities. The city previously issued for the Sixty-Sixth Street Project for the nine million, one hundred thirty thousand general obligation street reconstruction bonds, series twenty seventeen A, and the nine million, seven hundred seventy thousand general obligation street reconstruction bonds, series twenty eighteen A, of which four million was for the Sixty-Sixth Street Project. Staff is proposing issuing bonds in the par amount of eight million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. The par amount is net of a hundred million cash contribution, or one million, excuse me, cash contribution from the city. The source of the cash contribution would be local government aid set aside funds. Debt service of the bonds will be provided by an estimate annual debt service tax levy of four hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, three hundred ninety, and a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, three hundred and forty contribution from the city utility funds. So these are, this is something that we've been talking about in years past and really have been budgeting for. Both of these projects are are basic reconstruction projects that are absolutely necessary for the future, future of our city. I don't know if there's any additional questions or discussion items that we we have on the council? Yes, Councilmember Supple?
So in preparation for this agenda item, I went back and reviewed the capital improvement budget and the plan that was adopted last year and the financing policies we currently have. And I think it bears saying that it talks about balancing the community's needs and the city's ability to pay. So I really do support the fact that we're going to reduce that paramount by using some of the L G A. Because I know you don't want to use L G A for ongoing things because you can't guarantee it's going to be there. But in this case, that's a good use of that money. And I also appreciate the long-term planning that went into many of the items in tonight's agenda. And so, you know, that being said, I'm looking forward to the upcoming discussions we're going to have in some of the work sessions about what our long-term goals are and how we're going to balance the needs with our ability to pay. And I think that's a good discussion to have and to talk about the debt load. And these are critical projects, but we also have to balance all of that out. So thank you to everybody that did the planning far before I got here. But I'm also looking forward to those discussions coming up.
No, and I think whenever we do the the budget again or start talking about all of this, I think we need to have a lot more clarity than we've had in the past and make sure that, you know, that we're healthy enough, you know, to to make sure that, you know, we're we're looking to the future. Because sometimes if when you do a city budget, you just can't go through it. I think it might even necessitate two meetings. I don't know. And that, I mean, when you're talking about transparency, you know, we for sure have got to know how this works. And it's complicated. And, you know, so we we need to make sure we're that we're on it.
And City Manager Rodriguez, I just thought this might be a good chance for you to talk a little bit more about kind of what is coming up, looking at our our budget into the future.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So we recently sat down with Director Regis and talked about this. And so we are having our goal setting, which is May fourteenth. And we can also talk about financial goals during that. But then also, we are going to have more meetings than just the one meeting that you're used to with the budget. So at least two meetings. And also Director Regis will go through key financial strategies, which he has in the past.
Good. Any other comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor. In in addition to echoing what my what my colleagues said, I I I really, and City Manager Rodriguez, it's 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 a timely conversation for us to have. And it's really hard to evaluate these kind of responsibilities in isolation. And so we like, at any given time and moment, we've we've invested in this. We're going to invest more. We're not done investing in our infrastructure and that's already paying dividends. Now we see the redevelopment of the hub happening. We see a lot of great things happening. It's being led because as a community, we're making these big investments. And a couple of things that I wanted to highlight, I appreciate the way Richfield does these kind of infrastructure investments. I I work with with folks when they find out they get, they have a twenty-five thousand dollar assessment because their house or their their property is on the wrong street, on the wrong corner. It's just devastating. And that that we all do that lift together seems like seems like the Richfield way. So I I appreciate that. As we, as we look at the 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 big picture and the intermediate picture, I I appreciate so much what Director Regis has done over the years. When we looked at our taxes and compared them with our, our, that that big suburb to the north in Minneapolis, we've, we've really excelled in terms of, we, we've, we've delivered similar value return for homeowners, but we, but we've kept the the property tax increase significantly lower. But as we, we look at, you know, the the underpass and the ice arena and, you know, everything, I'm I'm really looking forward to being able to just see a big picture. This is in in the next three or four, ten years, what we're looking at. So thank, thanks, it it takes a lot of people to have that conversation, but thank you to everybody. But thank you especially to City Manager Rodriguez and to our mayor, Mayor, for for leading us in this discussion and kind of setting that agenda. I really appreciate that.
Councilmember Wayland?
Yeah, just echoing similar comments. I appreciate that this is the way we do this. I greatly appreciate the doing some some creative accounting to figure out, not just like, here's the total amount we we need. Let's bond that much, but figuring out where we can draw from to bring that that tax levy down, I think, is is so essential. And yes, I I also look forward to the conversation because we we have invested a lot in our infrastructure and it shows. But that doesn't by any means mean we're we're done, that there's no big projects coming up, that there's still projects on the horizon for for public works and some some upcoming pretty big ones for the rec department. And so just continuing to make sure that we we plan for that in such a way that we aren't going, we can continue to minimize the the impact on on residents in their, the tax levy. So thank you.
Great. And with that, I will make the motion to adopt a resolution providing for the sale of eight million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand in general obligation bonds, series twenty nineteen A.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you very much, Director Regis. The next item goes to Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a consideration and approval of the fam, of the facility's dedication request to dedicate the stage of the Richfield Community Banshell to the Peterson family. And just a little background, the Banshell has been around, the concept, it's been part of the Park and Rec since the nineteen eighties, maybe even before that. And and so that's always been one of the big plans. This was considered when Don Fondrick was here, the flagship part. The park where everybody would have something to go to to celebrate community. And we've succeeded in doing that, you know, first we started, you know, with all the amenities we have. And and when this, this Banshell went to the Community Services Commission and nothing was really getting done and there was a lot of, you know, and people that hadn't decided or whatever. So we formed a task force. And a task force is is totally different than a commission because a task force is just dedicated to that one agenda. And and of course, a committee or or a commission meeting does all kinds of things in their meetings. So there was a group of folks that were recruited to be part of this task force. And one of them was Rick Chabs. And Rick Chabs is one of those type of people that's like Tom Rublin, you know, he's a doer. And one, one of the things that that we did is do a proposal. And 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 I thought, you know, getting Rick Chabs on this program will really, will really give us an edge because he knows how to work well in this type of role. Rick used to be on the planning commission. Then he was in other commissions too. He's also been on the the last two comp plans, comprehensive plans that we've done. And he was, were it not for Rick Chabs, you know, we wouldn't have the city hall we're sitting in. Because here's, he spearheaded this municipal center. I was going to say city hall, everybody calls it that. But this municipal center, and it's a beautiful municipal center and it, and it's like anything else. You outgrow it the minute you move in. But it's been, you know, it's been through the hard work of people like Rick Chabs. It's been through the hard work of people like Sue Sandall, who was also on the H R A and been on the city council and just still is very committed to seeing this project go through. It's also David Gepner, who's working on this. And he's, he's also, he was an H R A member for many years and part of, and still part of the community. And he's been very instrumental. You have Herman Swanson, you know, who's, who really, an east sider who believes in this project. We've had, we've had a lot of folks that have been disappointed and didn't like what was going on. But we strived to make sure that that this was going to be their Banshell. This has no, and now we want to, we want to do the dedication to the Peterson family. And the Peterson family, you know, it is Richfield's own, you know, they were. And the Peterson family, um, you know, it is Richfield's own, you know, they were, they were born here. They were part of Richfield, and it is Minnesota's first family as well, it's Richfield's. And they have, they're known internationally. And one of the, one of the things people say, well, they haven't really, you know, have they contributed? Yes, they've contributed. They've done a number of things to promote a healthy city. And one, the first meeting that, that we had in order to, to let people know about this ban shell, it was at the, at the Richfield High School. And we had, I think there were like three different things that we had. We had the Peterson family, we had two other events that were going on in other parts of the high school. And um, and that was our first fundraiser. And the Peterson family, naturally, you know, they, you know, so you, you had, if you, if you went to that, you had an opportunity to see all the three programs that were going on. It's because you would rotate. And the Peterson family was a big hit, and they really helped us out quite a bit. I think dedicating the stage uh, to Patty, the Peter, Patty Peterson family, I think it's really wonderful because, you know, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we have the community builders. And they've been community builders, as has Rick Jabs. And one, one of the other things that as, as we, you know, worked really hard to make this a reality, this is gonna be the Richfield Ban Shell. It's not gonna belong to anybody else, it's gonna be the Richfield Ban Shell. We've had a lot of, a lot of our community that has contrib- contributed quite a bit. We've, we've had, um, and when I'm saying quite a bit, I mean, it's very significant. For, for one thing, like Gertrude Alrick donated uh, ten thousand dollars for the garden. Of course, we're gonna name it the Gertrude Alrick Garden. Of course, we're name, gonna name it the Peterson Family Stage. Of course, we're gonna name it, and, and not to mention other people like Dave Butler, who has, who has really been very, very, very instrumental in, in every, in every way that he can to fundraise. And he's been, you know, um, kind of the right-hand guy for Rick Jabs to make this happen and to make it a reality. And it's gonna be the type of, of ban shell that you hear the music and you can, and you can, you could do things with the audio system to make people enjoy it and, and not, not be a nuisance. So I look forward to this, it's, it's gonna belong to our community. We're gonna be proud of it, the way we are of the swimming pool, the way we are of the pavilion we have, the way we are of Veterans, the Veterans Memorial. I mean, all of those, the swimming pool, all of those had someone that didn't want it. And they worked hard to keep it from happening. But lo and behold, we have citizens that come together and want something, and they'll work to make it happen. That's what makes this Richfield such a great community, 'cause we all work to make things happen. You know, we have a fabulous staff, and they can, you know, and they, you know, they're, they're, they're professional people. They work hard, and they work hard with the citizens of this community. And they wer- wer- work hard to make things happen and to help things happen. And if, and if it's, you know, I mean, um, I miss John, John, uh, Jim Topsonhofer. You know, he was a really big help to us. He knew how to cut corners, he knew how to, how to move this and that and the other. He made, he, it was, it was just, um, he was a very good guy. He, I, I don't, you know, he came into it, and, you know, that's one thing that I love about the staff is something's voted on, you know. And, and, you know, the staff knows that they're gonna have to come forth and, and help make things happen. They do, they buy into it because they believe in city, in our city. And uh, and with the five oh one C three, we've been able to, to be pretty self-sufficient. And we're gonna continue to raise money and we're, continue to add on to it to make it really, really a very important part of our flagship park. And I don't know if, and I appreciate that Rick Jabs is here because we really owe a debt to him for a lot of things that had happened in Richfield. I was talking to Mayor Winsted a little while ago, and, and he, and he brought up the fact that, 'cause we were talking about old friends that had passed, you know, the, the former, former council members, former state senator, former, you know, former state representatives and what happened to folks. And, and he says, you know, he said, that when, when um, one of the city manager, former city manager's wife passed away, well, he brought it up as a tribute the way I'm, that I did today. And, and he said, and you know what the city council said? They said, who is that person? Because there's no institutional memory after a while. If we just keep electing new people, and we need to elect new people because they bring fresh ideas, they bring, run, blood runs through their veins and, and uh, faster than it does through mine. And they're, and they're doers, and they're smart. But one thing we have to value is what, what we wanna call the establishment, the people that have paid their dues from, from the League of Women Voters who, who put together a planning commission and a human rights commission. From people that build that pool in spite of the fact that says, well, we're gonna have way too many people and who's gonna use it and it's, you know. I mean, and now everybody brags about what goes on at, at Richfield's Veteran Park. So um, I really think that this is um, a tribute to all the hard-working people, not only of, of current people, but of the, of the folks that have come and it goes all the way back to the, to the eighties. And Don Fondrick was, was uh, was a good guy, and he made a lot of things happen. And so I don't, I don't wanna ignore him, and then Jim was just fabulous. And now we've got new leadership on this end, and we run, we appreciate that too. But uh, I don't know if anyone has anything to add, or, or maybe I, you know.
Any comments from council members? I'd like to just say thank you for your comments, council member Garcia. I, I think it is absolutely very important to have uh, the institutional community leaders and the new community leaders working together hand in hand because they each contribute um, something that's extremely important to, to creating a prosperous community. And thank you to Rick Jabs, who has been a leader in our community for so many years and continues to be, and for all the folks who are making this great uh, facility possible. And, and I really like the idea that you shared about the community builders and, and the bricks and, and thinking about it um, in a different way to really emphasize those who, who contribute and build our city. So thank you for that.
And you'd be surprised too, because this, this ban shell hasn't happened with just us. It's, it's had, it's had the blessing of a lot of um, you know, organizations like the Rotary, like the Optimist Club, like the school system, like those of us here who have bought a brick. I bought two bricks, beautiful bricks. And, and some of you have brought, bought bricks and some of you haven't. But even some of you that can't afford it, you're contributing, you could contribute a small amount, and it'll add up to a brick. And, and um, you know, to David Butler and, and his family who have donated a lot, a lot of money. It's wonderful. And thank you to our, to our city manager who has bought a brick because she saw that it was a community builder. And we hired a city manager that was gonna build this community and continue to, to build it and nurture it. And uh, so I will move that we approve a, a facility dedication request to dedicate the stage of the Richfield Community Ban Shell to the Peterson family.
Second.
Uh, before we close the motion, is there any additional comments from council or staff that we've missed? Nope. Great.
I'd just, I'd just say that um, I'm really excited for, for this as a, I don't wanna be, but it's a, it's a vehicle for community.
Yes.
It's a tool for, for community, and um, and there, there are different ways that you have community, and you have really tight ties and, and close, we call, we call strong ties, where you make a plan to go to somebody's house, and you have, you have a nice dinner. But uh, cities come together because of weak ties. And weak ties don't mean they don't mean anything, they just mean that I wasn't planning to see council member Garcia, but I went to go see some music, and then I saw council member Garcia, and I saw five other people. And every time we create a space that does that in our community, we do ourselves an incredible service. And uh, so many people have worked so hard to create a space where those kinds of things can happen, and I'm really looking forward to that, and appreciate all their hard work and uh, wholeheartedly uh, support the motion to uh, to name the stage.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you very much. And the next item is the city manager's report.
I just have one item. We need to know if the council is interested in participating in the uh, red, white, and blue days parade as a unit.
That's right, I forgot about that item above. Um, so who is interested in participating? What is, what does that mean? Oh, you said that's the parade specifically, nothing else outside of the parade you're looking at?
I think it would be a lot of fun.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I'll be there either way, but I think I'll, it'd be great to do it as a council.
Great, thank you.
Good.
And then the next, oh, go ahead.
If I might just, I'll put this notice in, however much candy we think we need, we need three times, quadruple, whatever the candy, so you're gonna say like, this is, this is like, you know, more than enough, then buy three times as much.
I think four thousand is about the amount, no, amount you need. Our, our church has had a float, and it's about four thousand pieces of candy.
Yeah, okay, great, great, I, I defer to my uh, my learned uh, parade colleague to the left.
Well, at least I think uh, our mayor has finally bought into kids like candy.
Uh, not really, but.
I was gonna let that one slide.
Your battles in Fourth of July is not gonna be a battle that I pick.
Candy and one bag of mandarin oranges.
All right, uh, next is claims and payroll, and that goes to council member Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, for the honor of, of um, of, of this particular agenda item. Uh, I will move claims and payroll.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll has been approved. And with that, I adjourn this meeting.